How are you?
I'm doing great. It doesn't matter. So what's your tell? We have to tell them.
Okay.
Now, I want you to think about this.
We got this one right. Good deal, good deal, advice. Thanks, Mike. Yeah.
Happy to... He needs to fix that. He needs to fix it on that.
It's the first time he's started.
You've got to bring it up to the first standards. And they're going to do it. So they turn on the light back.
So yes.
So I would take it all. We have to lay the... I can... I don't know. Look at how you are hanging out there. It's a little bit...
Just... I think it's a little weird, so... You're not sure we've been... First time.
We probably have that for a... Generally, we have the...
I don't know.
That's why we got away. That's why we got away.
But we kind of forgot. I just... Well, they're not... What's that?
We had to... We don't know how we would have... We have to... We have to... If we change...
Thank you very much.
So they're right in the neighborhood. So I was hoping that they grew and saying now. That's where we are. So I don't know. Kind of left it up in the air two weeks ago. So I guess I'd like to know how you guys feel about it.
I'm mixed on it only because. I'm 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 mixed on on doing this only because. The town's never been deeded any property. So pulling the deeds and I'm glad that this came up because I I think it was Alice. Alice Fitzgerald. That deed. Um, pulling deeds and doing the research. Town roads that are owned by the town, they're they're deeded to the town. So I don't have that and. Uh, Blueberry Lane was by Helen Blake. September twenty fourth of two thousand four. Yeah, High Vista.
When when was when was High Vista passed? Been really nice.
I don't have I don't have a date on on the top of this one warranty deed. Okay, so commencing it for the the High Vista. With warranty covenants, commencing at an iron pipe set in a junction of stone walls at the southwestly terminus of the public road on those Blake Road. At the southeastly corner of land now or formerly of Narkeettis. That's running south forty-two degrees fifteen feet west, a distance of three hundred fifty-three point two feet to an iron pipe. That's turning and running south seven degrees zero east, a distance of two fifteen to an iron pipe. And it's got like seven.
Could I, sorry, would I interrupt? Could I interrupt you on that?
Well.
And I have to look at that and lay it out so I can figure out where those sign pipes at. But my only debate on that is that town has been up there since the early eighteen hundreds. How many, how many deeds you have in your favor up there that go back to that spot? My point is, is if you go back that far, what are the chances of that being a deed? So I've never seen anything that in any of the deeds that we have. The deed to the road, deed to the right way. Now, it might have been a deed going up to the turn, which I doubt. But it's, when you go back that far, well, I'll tell you that. And what else to say to it?
Well, I I mean, I don't have a problem, you know. If it is in fact a town road, uh, you know, per your statement, and I spoke to Frank before the meeting started. Your statement was that a selectman said that that was a town road nineteen seventy-seven. Well, no, let me finish. So with that statement, yeah, okay, yeah, maybe it was. I don't know. I wasn't here. Nineteen seventy-seven, I was five years old, brother. So pulling the deed back from nineteen seventy. There's there's no, it doesn't show that that was deeded to the town. Now, I'm not saying that it's not a town road. But I need some proof that it is. Somebody needs to prove to me and lay it out there because how? How right is it for you to come in and us to accept that you say it's a town road? And somebody else has a road that. Well, that's a town road, you know, back in eighteen forty-five, you know, they said it was a town road, so it must be a town road. You know what I'm saying? So if there's something, you know, how long have you been here?
How long have I been here?
Yes, sir.
Well, I was born.
Been a couple days.
I was born and raised up there. But when I really set the intention to what was going on. Seventy-seven, that's where this date came from, is when we decided to move back up the fence. Okay, McLongstour shot, there was a period of time where there was no way out there in the winter. There was always someone there at Summits. But for X number of years, it was over here in the winter, so we stopped plowing. It's kind of, you know, had it off, pull it down off the ball to come out, because nobody was, you know, going to be up there. So that's where this nineteen seventy-seven comes from. We decided to go out and do some work on the house. Right by Arthur Blake's homestead, which is big time on what's going on on Walter Blake Road.
That's the white one on Old County?
No, it's on, that's the homestead. Arthur Blake's is up on Walter Blake Road.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, uh, so we come up and the road was blocked off because they didn't plow up there. So I asked the selectmen, which at times one was Arthur Blake, one was Ernie Law, and I think the other one was Walter Blake. I don't know, maybe somebody get down and tell us. Anyway, so anyway, the three of us got together and we decided that it was a town road. Because it wasn't looking too big between the three of them. Ole and Lushy, the road commissioner at the time, came up and moved it all up. During the course of two weeks, we had two or three different snows, snowstorms. Ole come right up, Wallem right up. So that's where seventy-seven comes in. But as far as, uh, you know, personally. You know, this high. I didn't know anything about the bowl. But I can tell you.
And that's my point is, you know, there were a lot of things that. In my conversation with Frank, there were a lot of things that happened back in the day that we're never gonna know. You know, so we have to make a decision now. That's the expectation, that we make a decision now. But it's really hard to make that decision when there are questions and variables. So, well, you know, I I I offered, and and I I didn't offer, I threw out there in last week's, the last discussion on this, why don't we just gravel? Why can't we? If it's a, if it's a town road, as we're being told. Public Works gravel. We don't need to spend the money on the pay for it?
Excuse me, but for you, oh, there, is what the Google did. I would like to know if the town's going to, uh, agree that that is a town road. Because if the, if the town won't, there's not much sense in talking about gravel, tie, or any. Which leads me to the point where if you look, uh, I looked this up the other day. You look on Brad Cole's, uh, Brad's, uh, history of Rockville. You look at some of the old maps of it. There's a couple in there, one from nineteen hundred, nineteen oh three, I think another one was. You look at those maps and it shows the road.
Is that, is that a picture that was taken of the map? Is that a picture taken of the map?
Yeah, yeah, well, it's a Brownfield book.
Because I got Brown. I bought that. That's pretty cool.
So, you know, and that's another, that's another point. And I mean, I don't, I don't know where it is, unfortunately, but that's the nature of it. I have some maps at the farm, a road in the United States. That show that. Who? Doug Lake. Road Walter Blake Road going right up. Walked the hill to the town. Shows, shows the turn where it comes up to the town. I mean.
Bring the maps in. Why can't we see them?
But I'll, you know, if I have to look for them. It's not even showing.
The only reason I'm asking is, you know, in the, in the deed, it's not called Walter Blake Road. It's just straight up Blator. And that's right, that's right from the registry of deeds. So, and truthfully. You know, I know people that call Senator Conley Road Mill Street or Conley Road. So it it does come down to being, being very specific on what a road state is. I don't have the history here that you have, or this guy, or this guy. So it it is important and, you know, if you've got the maps, bring them in. I've got no problem with that.
So do you see that map that will make you feel that it's a town road?
I'm not gonna answer that until I see everything that's presented.
What's that?
I'm not, you're not gonna, you're not gonna get me a yes or a no on this, Mr. Blake, until I see everything you got to offer. Then you will not get an answer of me, from me tonight that says, yeah, if you give me a map that says, it says Walter Blake Road, that I'm gonna say, yep, all right, fine, it's a town road. That's not gonna happen. Bring in what you got. We can all sit down. We'll even do a workshop so that it isn't a selectman's meeting. And it's, you know, we can all sit around here, throw out the maps. I think it'd be really cool anyway to see maps from the late eighteen hundreds, nineteen hundreds, in their original form. Just the historical value of that is great. We can come to, you know, to that, to that deal, you know what I mean? I got no problem with that. None at all.
There's, there's a map from the post office. I just happened to notice it today, well, and it shows a town map. And it's been since Buena Vista Road went in. Yeah, it shows Buena Vista going, and then it shows its extension going up to your house. From Walter Blake Road. There's a little lake going up from Buena Vista Road. The other thing is, there's been, what, fifty years of the town plowing and maintaining the road, which sort of sets precedent, doesn't it? And is that a legal, is that a legal precedent? I'm not sure.
It's my understanding, and we ran into this problem, Bill, I believe you were on the board at the time. Um, it's essentially called righting them wrong. There is no legal precedent. If a town is plowing a road and it is not a town road. Then all we can do is apologize and cease and desist any and all maintenance and putting the town's vehicles or equipment on that private property. So there is no legal precedent. I have no problem with that. It's not a smart, it's simple as that. But.
But it does make you want, you know, I mean, it's been many years. It's been maintained. And it's like I say, I go back to before. You know, before this town grew, when I had the, you know, back in the day, there was a lot of stuff that wasn't recorded. I think we're probably finding that now. I mean, it's, it's all the same. If that's what you want, I'll do the best I can to get, you know, get, find out the maps and whatnot. Anyway, it is, it is what it is.
Let us know. We can set up a workshop on it. We just gotta have, we have to have time to put it on, uh, website.
I think that, um, I think it did, I'd be all in favor of that, because then you could get just as exactly what, you know, what that is. Because, you know, a lot of it, it does a public, right?
They, they all have to be public, yes.
So, I mean, if the public wants to come up and look at it, you know, hopefully, maybe they would understand where, you know, where the, uh, what the problem is.
I have two questions.
I don't know if I want to answer.
I believe, Frank, you said in nineteen eighty-two forward, the town had their own equipment. They didn't contract that. Okay, so that was my first question. Nineteen eighty-two, folks, uh, Town of Rockville decided to have Public Works Department to start plowing their own roads. So my question to, to anybody would be, anything prior to nineteen eighty-two was done by contract? Somebody was paid to have equipment that go plow roads and route it, correct? Okay, but it was the, the, the contractor said, I'm going to pay you X amount of dollar, you know, the, I need to get X amount of dollars to plow the roads around. Okay, so. Contractor owns that equipment, and if they so feel like, you know what? Terry's a good egg. I want to fly with Stride Way, because I'm already out this neighborhood going by, and I cut this Stride Way out. That very well could have happened, correct?
Yeah, it probably could have.
That's the ending of my question.
But also again, a report to that in that if they, if those road commissioners, road commissioners, not Public Works.
Commissioner or contract, yep.
If they have to plow one more mile than what they're getting paid for, you think they're gonna plow it?
If it's your relative, or if it's your wife's relative, or if it's your first girlfriend in high school's parents. Very well, and they own the equipment. I I appreciate the report, but they own the equipment, and if they choose to add an extra mile onto their equipment, they very much have that opportunity. As it'd be no different than with my tow truck, if you're paying me to go from point A to point B with your truck, and I decide to take a five-mile detour, so I can go, you know.
We'll see if we can find our facts. When we took care of that, Peachtree, by the way, took care of it. Took care of it. That plowed that hole, that hole and draw it.
I wasn't referring to that. Yes, ma'am.
I'm gonna be interested to research. The portion from Arthur's Lake Spire up to John, up to Buena Vista Road. Is that deeded anywhere? Did anybody see if that was deeded?
And that's why I asked a question of, of. Well, it said Walter, you you stated Walter Blake Road, and I'm like, okay, well, in this here, it's stated as Blake Road. And but it's, and that, but I have to, no, what I'm saying is, when. So what if Blake Road was, and let's face it, your family owned all of the property out there. If they had a Blake Road, and then they said, well, this is Walter Blake, because it goes to Walter Blake's house, then they threw a sign up there back in the sixties.
No, that was always, that was.
That, I I'm not arguing with a point, Terry. Not by no means, if I argue with a point.
They just named it Blake Road, you know, but it's almost been known, I mean, you can ask any Blake.
No, I I I'm not arguing with that. I'm just saying, in the deed from the registry of deeds, that's what we're, that's what we're answering to. I'm not answering to the genealogy of who lived where, whose roads, who originated it. I'm not at all. I don't know that history. But according to registry of deeds, it's called Blake Road, and High Vista is laid out with iron rod and full degree coordinates and measurements. So if you'd like a copy, no problem, you can. How, was this, uh, I see these roads downstairs.
I just writing this map. Once it's like it was done with a typewriter.
That's what it looks like.
Yeah.
That definitely is what it looks like. Yep. It's a typewriter. I'm hoping for the selector, I have him selected to, over the order or under with the, this, this one here is, uh, it's, the title on it is warranty deed. We can get a copy for it.
Thank you, Rick. Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Harold Brooks, Eric Walker, and Sidney Willetson. That's a sad, outdated, uh, favorite chicken. So here, a little chicken. Okay, so we have the appointment papers for the, uh, communications committees. So we will sign these. Terry Lockhead. Alice Fitzgerald. Kathy Daly. Vincent Linavera. Yes, I know. Over here somewhere, just for you. Laura Amica. Lynn Boyle.
I guess it's a surprise to me.
Brad Ford. Well, I just wanted to. Probably want the best guy.
I hope that don't really say so. Yeah.
Should I go get back? My buddy gives the boards, draws the situation. Okay, we got the charterers renewal for the property and casualty insurance. Guess what, folks? It went up. We did, uh, talk to them. Hello, fellow committee, and we, we talked about the coverages, because their initial coverages weren't enough for even tax value on the buildings and property that we had. So we had a review done, so. Did he send an email that said how much?
Yeah, totally eight thousand, some change.
So it went up. That went up twenty-three grand. Well, I will say this. We are extremely fortunate that we have insurance. Between claims. Just claims, period, just claims. Well, I could have insurance. Who reminds me of, pull this back to, uh, somebody who's here. Oh, Frank, you were talking about. So I'm sure I should. All right, we have it. G A audit. In compliance. Passed with flying colors. Thank you, Ms. Patty, for your hard work. Pretty appreciated.
Um, the, the next one, the very last one. So is that spectrum?
Yeah.
Okay, so spectrum feedback. A figure that was acceptable. Okay, yeah. So what would be consolidated? It would be twenty-five dollars more per building, so it would be a hundred dollars more. However, they came back, they offered us a thirty months free, too. So that would include all of the buildings for the first three months, that if we sign up with them, would there be no shade to do? And then, then we'll go to what they had closed, which was like two hundred dollars per building, which includes the telephones as well.
Oh, my third floor.
Yes, and that includes, the internet includes the phone system. They have a bunch of features that are really gonna be helpful for us. It includes ring central, if we need to use a ring central. It includes a firewall for our security on our laptops, and then it also includes cloud storage, so we can store all our videos in the cloud. Yes, so that's.
So that rings out this, too. That's three, that's three, three houses.
That's three. So all in all, it, it, we're not really comparing just the consolidated, we're also comparing all the add-ons that we're paying for and getting to that, so.
So it's cheaper here?
So I was happy with the price and the review is acceptable, and then they came back with the three months free, so that, that was the.
So, so then we.
Yes, it, yeah, it might be less, and yeah.
Do you want spectrum? I know some people got a property issue.
Oh, did I, everyone mentioned I think called consolidated, because, uh, the IT guy said that. The IT guy said that video is better because it's fiber. And I called consolidated, they don't have video considering, we have no idea.
They never will. As soon as spectrum gets the majority of it. All in favor? That's for the spectrum?
Yes, it's just a courtesy that they don't do their license that soon.
Yeah, anytime that those, it's a state issue of license, or it's just a courtesy. Okay, the main revenue service, certified ratio declaration approvals. Main revenue services have received your completed twenty-five certified ratio declaration form. Requesting the brownfield, brownfield be allowed to use a certified ratio that varies by more than ten percent from the developed parcel ratio last determined by MRS. After reviewing the evidence you provided, your request to certify one hundred percent has been approved for commitment April one, twenty twenty five. So we are on the money, folks, with main revenue services.
Yes, yes, that means the assessors doing their job. That means that the mill rate will be lower. And that people will get the a hundred percent of the home stay where it's like twenty-five thousand dollars. Said they get twenty-five thousand, we probably can get less.
Okay, uh, we face the form, turn, stop sign at the end of the misty lane, you already handled that, but it didn't, yep. Listen, pal, I ain't got that for rush.
Let's just say it's not.
Yes.
I've got it ordered, so.
No, 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 that was because you couldn't see at the end of misty of that one. Nope, nope, buddy, I know buddy went down there and then that was further discussion. Okay, another suggestion. Public safety, roadside brush, missing stop ahead sign and stop sign turned it slightly with brush, figuring the clarity of it. Suggestion, clearing of maintenance. Should we take that for action?
Where's this?
Bailey Town Road?
Yeah.
Okay, upcoming events, Thursday. Thursday, town halls closed for federal holiday, June. Tuesday, slide board meeting at five thirty, this is next week, workshop, playground workshops at P M. Wednesday, plant implementation committee meeting, six thirty at the library. Thursday, public safety building committee meeting at five, and then that Friday as well, public safety building committee meeting at five.
So on that Thursday, the sports office window will be closed. I know this, that they're all.
That's what you get for June twenty-sixth. June twenty-sixth, six P M. The community center for the special town meeting for Article Three, any roll article. Yes. Yes. At the town meeting, my statement was, if everything passed as written in the warrant prior to anybody voting. We were still dropping the mill rate seventy-five cents per thousand. So it would actually be twelve sixteen, twelve sixteen.
So what will it be if this didn't pass?
Don't know.
It's a different.
It's, essentially we're trimming thirty-two thousand dollars off the month. So it might, it probably won't have an effect. If it does, it may be a ten. Because it's only thirty-two thousand, which is. What? It took twenty-five dollars contingency. We have a week, so I will ask the assessors and to. A little still, take the, take the twenty-five thousand, whatever the, the warrant, let me, and then this warrant as requested. And see what our number is, and we will have that accounted.
Oh, Ricky, at the, this is David's going to call us on. At the, at the coming meeting, voters changed the amount, or is it going to go up, take or down?
They can go down, they cannot go up.
Okay, and it's decided by show of hands?
Yes. All right, you have anything for?
Uh, yes, I do. It's coming to the end of the year and everyone's. Starting to get all their vacation time done because they're gonna lose it. There will be a few people that have maybe a few days that need to be carried over. I just wanted to. Get approval to carry over from vacation time from this year to next year. Two years, days for a couple of people, a week or a month. Take any time, so. So maybe, we'll say like two weeks vacation pool. No, no.
That's, that's my concern.
Yeah.
I'll make that motion that with the custom year ending, the employees that have vacation time. We extend. That courtesy to not lose their vacation.
So extending it to the next special year?
I shouldn't lose the time, yeah. There's always. Sorry, it's, it's all right. No, 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 there, there's no, yeah.
I just have one question. Sounds really good. Can you do absentee vote?
Can you do what?
Yeah, something you can do.
This isn't a referendum. This is an open town meeting.
I just started having that answer.
Yeah, no, the only time you would do this, have that absentee is if we have a referendum vote. And absentee ballots have to be available thirty days prior to the vote. Y'all wanna hang on? Glad to hear it. No, it's, it's a referendum. So, back to our, sir. All favor.
Thank you. That's it?
Yep, yeah, I'll have. Before, three, three. Well, not true. Open the forum. Yes.
Just an update on the playground committee. We've got two demolition votes in right now, and waiting on three more. We'll have it to the select board by Monday. On what we have, but as of right now, we have two. We have looked, we are looking at multiple different playgrounds. We have five that we're looking at right now, and we've got at least three more that we found today that we're looking at. So, the next meeting will be July seventh, for anybody who wants to come see what we're doing. So we're hoping to have it narrowed down, so we want to present the best three to the select board here shortly.
Sweet. So everybody knows, June twentieth is the drop dead day for the. Estimates for demo and removal of the wooden playground out back by the ball field. Next Tuesday, we will open those, discuss it up, and make a decision. Yes. I got some. I'd have a good appreciation of your time. So you reached the insurance one up, and you simply posted the rate, so with all the points you had. Okay, is that liability? Health? What is that for? Uh, we have a couple accidents, bomb trucks, that, I can, I can tell you that. Uh, the rest of the claims, I can't, I can't expose them. Okay, that'll be. That'd be a town attorney. I can't do this. Yeah, we haven't had it, so. No, I'm just curious. Yeah, so no, not, not any. Just a. I'm all people that I have. So, Steve Metting and Lisa Thompson, please. Everybody knows these, this appreciation are handed out at the town meeting, and the people that weren't present. Now we're trying to, trying to head up, so I do appreciate all the time. Insurance, that's also fulfillment. Yeah, just, yeah, you said, we were under insurance there already. Uh, no, when they, because of the, the rate change, they had come in and asked, and they, they had brought up what they were insured, insuring as far as at the time. And with the rate, the reval that the town experienced. That was the buildings that were undervalued, but it hadn't gone into effect. So we were, we were covered for what we needed, but with the reval, and then with this renewal, we definitely wanted to get everything brought up.
Just another one. At the special meeting, can you guys keep going until you get the voters to agree with the number, or is there like some stuff? I think the school district, they keep going until a number is arrived at.
Okay, well, the difference with a school budget is their, the verbiage of their article is what some will. You know, operate to tech department, whatever, however they, but it is what some will, so they can throw a number up, any number. They can go up, they can go down, they can go wherever they want with. With the warrant and the municipality, the number that we have on the warrant, we cannot exceed that, we can only go lower. Meet that number or lower, that is it. Yeah, as long as it takes.
And it's like hypothetically, if they approve a dollar, can you move money around to?
No, sir, nope. Nope, if the, if the majority votes for a dollar, every department is a town property.
I'm not suggesting they will, I just.
You would be absolutely amazed of what that question will turn into on social media within hours. It'll go haywire. Oh, they're saying it's only for a holler. No, not by any means.
No, no one said that. I was, I'm trying to, I'm trying to interpret, you know, main rules of New Hampshire, rules of New Hampshire. If you give them a buck, they, they can move money around and cover.
We wouldn't be able to if we had the ability, the only way that we can do, we still have to go to town vote. And that's to utilize reserve, general surplus. That would be the only way, but we still have to have a majority vote of the taxpayers in order to use, utilize that. Contingency was requested at forty thousand, they got reduced by twenty-five, or it was fifteen. So we have fifteen thousand. The good thing about contingency is it can be utilized for anything. Payroll, telephone bill, whatever, it doesn't matter. So, and, you know, if we had forty thousand, at least a couple of the key players could have kept it open if we don't come to a resolution, but. Fifteen thousand dollars is, it's not gonna be a reason. We're in a tight spot.
You are.
Yes.
Ricky, I spoke with you two, three weeks ago about that information packet that I had sent.
Information. Oh, yeah, yeah.
You use it, you check into that?
I did, I, I, to be very honest, I asked a question, and then it was warrant time, and. We've been in quite the, quite the pinch with town meeting and some other things that have come up. An actual. Public hearing in Augusta, I can say that, that definitely gained my attention. So no, I do not have a response from the attorney. I can now, let me get through the special town meeting and all the financial woes that we're dealing with.
Also, since we've logged on these twenty minutes, can you tell me how many things have been sent to the town, Mr. Curry? You know, were, you know, whatever she needs in that aspect.
I don't understand your question.
Well, she needed proof of the parking and stuff like that, and I have sent several audio reports to the C D H C when I went to the center to meet town attorney.
We're gonna need you.
Okay.
If there's any questions, I probably want to go with Nenda. Everything was busy at that time, right, with the election and everything.
Last three weeks spent a hoot. Okay. I'm gonna get with Patty and find out what the discussion was with the town's attorney, and then we'll go from there. Okay.
On buy the truck, go buy a truck, you know, what are we gonna do? Gotta get it. Article nineteen, obviously, is what we're fourth, or the new public works person. So, uh, speaking for the select board in the town, uh, had a made a deal with the taxpayers that we would revisit this come November seventh, which is a referendum. Um, so I'd like to stay, I'd like to keep good on that. Um, I really do. So, my question to my two colleagues. My two colleagues. I love the opinion that we form a committee, a truck purchase, how about we all long-term? Okay? Because what I find amazing is just due to the timing, um, it was, oh, well, it's just because that's the only truck you could snap off. No bullshit. Freightliner was called, Mack was called, you know, Whitedge was called, you know, so as usual, the accusations are thrown out without any, it's just, just that. I was surprised with the mixed deal as far as a used truck, which is great, no problem. Um, I deal with cars and trucks every day. That's my job. So, a used truck could pose a very expensive, uh, lesson to the town. So, I would like to form a committee. And hopefully, they will look for the best interests of the town and provide us with that research, um, on best guess, hey, you know, this is a used truck, we could, uh, you know, we could get it for a hundred K, well, I gotta put about five into it to, to make sure that it's up to snuff, you know, I'll do a, you know, do treatments, maintenance, whatever, tires, four tires, however. But I, I, I think that committee would be very, uh, fitting for that type of purchase. I mean, help folks, we've got a communications committee. You know? We had a sign committee, we had a playground committee. I think it's a large enough and an, uh, uh, an important enough, uh, topic to get some assistance from the town. What is that?
Yeah, I think we should have a committee, uh, so, yeah, you know, like, everybody talked about getting three bids, four bids, whatever, from different, uh, truck suppliers, uh, also, you know, through a cost analysis, like, everybody's, you know, insurance, fuel, mileage, yeah, all that, yeah, I think it's great to get studied before it gets presented to the town.
Perfect. Very much appreciated. Yeah. Any support? So, okay, taxpayers, I need some volunteers. I need some committee members.
I'd be a volunteer.
Perfect. What about you, sir? I am really glad to see you raising your hand. Yeah. And I'm really glad to see yours as well. Thank you very much. So, I think mostly form a truck purchasing committee. Most is on the floor. All in favor? Thank you. People, please, put your hand up and say your name out loud so that Ms. Patty can get your information and we can get the appointment papers signed for next week.
How many people on the committee want to sit in?
Eleven, seven minimum, eleven total. Not to exceed eleven. That gives you a form.
You know, one of the complaints I heard was everyone said, well, we've got to hire a new driver to have a truck. And that, that was the complaint that I heard about this whole thing.
Well, as it stands...
They look at the truck, it makes a lot of sense to buy it, the new one, you propose it, paid a lot of sense because you wouldn't need any maintenance on it. And yes, except for oil changes.
What do we study with the committee? You know, whether they go new and used?
Well, I do want, I do want to point out one thing that, that seemed to catch a lot of people's attention is, um, well, if, if the, the truck driver's sick, it's all our trash. People, we've got, that would have been the fourth public works employee, okay? There was a very specific reason the select board said no to a transfer station employee because it's only three days a week. So, do you want to hire him as a truck driver who just worked three days a week when we can use him at the town crew? Put him in a pile truck, put him in a grader, put him in a backhoe, we could do anything. And we have five drivers to choose from if there's a sickness, if there's a vacation. We have some coverage for drivers because everybody that works at Public Works has to have a CBI. So, the consideration was there. And that's why we asked for a public works employee and not a transfer station employee. But again, instead of asking the question or coming to the public hearing or the informational meetings, it was this with a whole lot of assumption. And ask the questions, folks. Ask the questions, please. Email, text, phone call, hell, come see me. I'm almost the last place on the road before you hit Hyrum. You can't miss the place. There's freaking cars everywhere on the side. Pull in. I'm answering for questions. Stop assuming because the assumptions, they're killing a lot of good things. They really... Who you got?
So, I have Tom, Chad, Dana, and Mr. Foster.
Oh, that guy in the back?
What's your first name?
Rob.
Hey.
Justin.
Justin.
Yeah, I want to be on the team, buddy. You gotta, you gotta get ladies in there.
I'm gonna need you for that one more time.
She needs it again.
First name, Heather.
Ooh, sweet. Who wants to be chair? Hang on there. Does anybody want to be chair? Perfect. Get your names, uh, get the, uh, chair before you leave today. Just get everybody's contact information as chair. And then first meeting you can set, you're gonna need a secretary. So, get the committee notes and set your agenda dates. Periods.
Ricky, I think it's a delicate balance between what the town wants and needs and what the taxpayers can afford. We've got a lot of retired people and, you know, it's just everyday costs that there are, you know, people, look, they're all interested in all at the same time. And I think that, you know, there was more information out there about this than it might have been given. I think that's what I hear.
Well, I would, I would very much, I, folks, I'm a taxpayer too. I get a tax bill just like everybody else, you know? Um, the only reason I have the, the information is one, because of the position that I'm holding, okay? I, I asked you to elect, I put my name on about, luckily, I was put into the position, okay, as a select. But I, I, I have a problem with, you know, there's not enough information out there. They're not getting the information, you know? We held two informational meetings and a public hearing on the, that very topic. And I get it, folks, I'm a taxpayer too. It, it's money coming out of my pocket, no different than any of you. But when you tell me, well, I didn't know.
I didn't say that. I just said some people didn't want it.
Right, and that's just it. The biggest complaint in Brownfield is lack of communication. Would everybody agree with that?
Yeah.
Nobody knows what's going on, right? We worked hard to get a new website that was user-friendly and that we could, we could put information on. Is that previous one done by Wheatley? That sucked. We could not get the information out. And it was like pulling teeth and nothing was arranged, it was all over the place. So, we worked hard, went especially, worked very hard to get that going. Now you can pay your taxes online, you can do all kinds of crazy shit with that website. But that's a way of information. Unless there's something going on, typically, every Tuesday night, there's a select meeting. All the time, folks. You know, we advertised informational meetings, we advertised snack roll, like, we have advertised public, public hearings. We ain't got a choice but to have that. But they're put out there. Eleven people showed up to a public hearing. Informational, nine, and then I think it was thirteen. And out of the thirteen, the same nine from the fir-, from the first one showed up, three extras. I think they were just strappers, honestly. So, we try, we honestly do try. And then, you know, as, as a, as a fix, and, and I, I'd like to put this to the, to the taxpayers as well, the, just the whole to-do that happened about this electronic sign absolutely amazes me. Six months of meetings, folks, six months! And at the last minute, when we were ready, the day we were gonna vote on expending the capital improvement funding for that, that was turmoil. Oh, my God, we can't do this. I didn't even know this was going on. Where the hell you been for six months? This isn't the first time it was spoken about and it wasn't a big topic. Then all of a sudden, it turned into a melee. So, my question to any of them, and I've yet to get an answer from anyone that I've posed this question. We all sit here and agree that lack of communication is a problem in Brownfield. Right? We agree with that?
I think that information is out there if anybody wants it.
Well, but...
People don't want it, they just want to complain, not to be watched.
But my point, ma'am, is that, that is the complaint, though, is one of the largest complaints at Brownfield is a lack of communication.
It's a lack of interest.
Well, I agree.
A lack of interest.
I agree.
It's okay. Miss it.
I agree. But my question to that complaint is, what's the solution? And I agree with you one hundred percent.
Solution is for them to, it includes their computer or something inside what they need to perform.
I know, but I agree with you a hundred percent, Mr. Slick. I, I truly do. I, I agree. You know, if they want the answer, they gotta find it one way or other.
So, all the people that are already standing gathered on committees and now they have to spoon feed the information to these people that want to stay home. That's not...
Agreed.
It must take you just...
Well, but yet, myself, my colleagues, my other elected officials, my board members, my employees, and I lose the view to the word, my employees, literally, folks, the town employees, um, you would be absolutely amazed at the, how we're chastised, called out, and just, oh, yeah, yeah, we're the assholes. But, what's the solution? Yes, ma'am?
Well, I think the first step is to create a committee to get together and open the air. We're trying to possibly make a public transportation. And we'll put it out on the website or put it out online. And that's something that you're trying to do is, I mean, that's probably the best that you have.
I, I do agree, ma'am, I, I do. I, I, I one hundred percent agree. And, uh, Terry Lockhead, if she's here, um, and Alice Fitzgerald, uh, like a month ago, uh, Alice, a month and a half, maybe, um, emailed me asking about forming the communications committee. Yeah, yeah, great, let's, let's do this. Well, she had some other business to take care of, so she came in, uh, her and Alice, actually, Terry was late, so I'm glad that Alice was here, she stepped up. Um, and that committee was formed. But, in all honesty, that committee request was only after the fact that it was a big problem about the electronic sign. It's like, we talked about it for six months. We didn't have anybody, not one bad thing was said about it until today we're gonna vote. And it's, it's crazy.
I would say it probably just wasn't on anybody's radar until the last minute. Because I don't know what's going on unless I happen to see it driving by and I, I, I have this seventy-five percent of stuff. But when it actually matters to come to vote, well, then we gotta, you gotta do it. So, there's, there's a little amount of time to, to, to create a good idea of how they should vote because they just don't have that information early.
But I, but I want to put it out there. That's not, that's not our fault.
No, 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 of course not, of course not, it's your fault.
But we're, but we're the ones to take the blame. And you know what? I, I, I got elected to do this.
I'm just telling you, my, 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 because I don't see, I'm not, I don't know, I haven't been in it last minute. I mean, we're talking about...
It's an argument.
I know.
Sir?
No, as a gentleman, the backsides, we're all concerned about taxes. But when we look at this truck, buying the new one, the maintenance on it for the first ten years are oil changes, the life of that truck is twenty years, and the money that would be saved by hauling itself, you've got to show them the chart.
Oh. That's still a reaction. Explain it. Never mind, never mind. Folks, just as a, a, a general thing, okay, uh, one of the things that was on that worksheet that Lynn took the time to create with Conway Incinerator, CIA, and then we doing it ourselves, okay? If you had the opportunity to review it, it's pretty critical, okay? Does anybody know the average tonnage per container that we average out of the transfer Six tons per container, folks. We average five to six tons. So, six tons at the current rate with Conway Incinerator, so let's do the math, six times seventy-two is four thirty-two per container, and then you add seven hundred for the new trip. Eleven thirty-two. Okay? That's per container.
For Con.
That's per container.
Right.
Seventy-two dollars a ton at Mount Carberry.
Right. For, for Conway Incinerator.
Correct, Conway Incinerator.
Okay.
With a container of six tons.
Okay.
Now, we go with CIA. Six ton, times one seventy a ton to go to Naples. That equals one thousand twenty dollars, folks. Now, you add the two seventy-five per trip, twelve ninety-five. So, the, the whole thing of, oh, let's go with the two seventy-five, bullshit, folks, we're losing money. We're, we're spending more money because our tonnage more than doubled. So, it is very critical, and I hope the committee really takes a strong look at where they're going. And yes, New Hampshire did put a moratorium on them, but guess who else is looking for it? There's talk at the main level of a seven hundred acre. So, don't be short-sighted that New Hampshire's our only option. Yes?
But what you're quoting is for one trip, correct?
Yes.
And we do how many trips per week?
Uh, the last three weeks were five containers each.
Okay. I'm just saying a realistic cost per week.
You know, well, it was eleven, just do eleven ninety-two.
Times five.
Times five. Fifty-nine sixty per week. Now, I will say this, folks, um, average, six ton, uh, average, five trips. There may need to be seven trips in a week because of just, like, holy shit, it was a big holiday and, you know, we brought in a lot of trash, but during the winter, we can eat three. So, it's an overall average. But if any of you, any taxpayer wants to see it, we get a tonnage report from EcoMaine and we also get one from Cardboard because we have to pay for the, the tonnage. So, we get a report. I believe it's not. Uh, the only good thing about EcoMaine is, uh, we have the, uh, ability to get some of our money back if, uh, cardboard or the plastics, you know, the, the, the stock price type of thing goes up, we actually make money. And I think we got, what, twenty-five hundred bucks last calendar year back, so it saves us a little money in the recycling, if it. But that, uh, I believe is due in September, the contract with EcoMaine, and it's eighty-five a ton. So, still, that's half of what we would wind up sending to Naples.
As the committee for trucks has been put out, are you giving us a date that you need to have the estimates in by so you can get to that November referendum?
Well, November, November referendum, that was in a second. Let me look up the November. Okay, so it's November fourth is election day, so the latest that we would have to do a referendum ballot, as I had spoke to the, uh, the, the town, the townspeople in regards to that, um, would be October second. So...
So, you need to have everything by October first?
We would have to make, no, we would have, the select board would have to, uh, have the information, make a determination, and the town clerk, uh, create the ballot.
Yeah.
Which, of course, thirty days prior, absentee for referendum. So, what I will say is, I would like to have the, Mr. Fortier, congratulations on your election. If you, you're gonna be dealing with this because you will be on the board, what do you guys think? Three weeks prior to absentee ballot availability, would you agree with that?
Yeah.
Three weeks, that give us enough time to review, ask questions, and then, uh, get the town clerk to create ballot. So, that will back us up to September, uh, let's say, September sixteenth.
That's where you need all the information.
Yes, sir. And that will give us the time. Yes, ma'am?
Are they gonna pull the new truck so bad?
No, ma'am, we've lost that all that. Don't go.
Saying almost three years away from getting it anyway. Can't get a new truck for another three years because of, we understand, there's so many people in that time.
Say that again?
So, I, I was under the impression, when we saw it was presented online, that we, there was a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to get this truck. It's only available for three years.
Okay, no, 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 no. So, here, here, please tell me where you saw online that we wouldn't see a truck for three years.
I, I, no, no, I, what I heard, and I heard it locally too, from, from actually the dump myself, a personal, for, for, for...
No, ma'am, no. The, this was the big thing, is we were literally five days, we had just sent the warrant out for print, so that we had the warrant out and the ballot. And they had a choice, I was two days out of the ballot. The truck was presented at two twenty-five when they were at, when it should have been two fifty. They offered it to us for two twenty-five, and they agreed to hold onto it until our June ballot vote.
But when I was under the impression, and I was owned by a couple of people, that this was a great opportunity, the only reason it was available was because another town backed out.
They did.
But that was like three years away. They didn't order one, wait for two or three years.
Truck was there. They ordered the truck, they backed out. It was already that.
The only reason it wasn't three years is if we went in and bought a new truck, we'd actually...
Expect it out to order.
That, well, that's, so now that we've lost that truck, like, the question is, if we go place an order with three years of truck?
Sure, it could be.
Yeah, and that's what I was asking. No, so we could be in that situation.
You could. But my question to you is, if we're three years out, as the committee, you're doing the research, why would you consider?
That, so that was the point I was trying to make. But I'm asking you as a committee, why would you consider? We wouldn't, why not? If it doesn't solve the problem, if there are things that...
Why would you say that? You tried to ask that, and it didn't work.
Yeah, uh, I went down to look at the truck in Westport, I talked to the salesman. They had, they ordered two trucks. They ordered one truck for Wilton, whatever the name is, in Wilton, New Hampshire, in those hauling, okay? So, they ordered two trucks because they thought they'd have another truck, whatever. He said nothing about they had to order a truck three years before Wilton could show up. It was not a three-year wait, okay? No one's gonna order a truck and wait for years.
Oh, really?
No. I mean, there was nothing on a...
Big trucks? When was the last time you bought a big truck?
Of course, the used ones.
Well, when, when's the last time you were trying to order a big truck? Don't, don't throw out there that a commercial vehicle that you don't, you've never dealt with, can't be on a three-year wait when you have to spec it out.
Well, I'm saying, he didn't mention three years when that truck, the two trucks he ordered. Oh, why would he? It doesn't matter, he's just trying to sell you a truck. If that's what he was trying to do, then...
Yeah, sell us a truck.
No doubt about it. Think there's ever been a half year.
Anything else?
Gee, that...
Last call. Yes, ma'am?
One more question about, one more question about three years. If we, if it comes from what the backstories want, you should get on the ball now.
Ma'am?
Even if it takes three years.
I'm sorry, I, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. Did you say that again? You come right up, please.
I'm just saying that, um, you say, you know, three years is such a long time, but it's, it's what the taxpayers want. It comes to be that way, you should get on that ball now.
Yes, ma'am. Hundred percent.
Because then the three years will come up, and we're gonna be like, dang it, we didn't get that, we should have done it. I mean, three years is a long time, but you have to think of the future.
Yeah, yes, ma'am. But I can't do anything until November. There's nothing that we can do, taxpayer walls, because we have to ask you. So, yeah, that's why, you know, where everything failed last week, we're on it this week, we've got a committee that greatly appreciate your participation. And I look forward to the information that's gonna come forth because, you know, believe it or not, I catch some of that information online, yeah, it's an absolute hoop. Absolute hoop, man. Yeah, let's buy a truck for thirty grand. Yeah, bullshit. No, people can deal with those kinds of vehicles.
Also, you're gonna be on the committee. So, the committee's just not gonna evaluate new truck as opposed to a used truck, we're also gonna get on our way.
Wait, 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 you don't know that. Works to evaluate every option. It could be a used truck or it could be a new one.
I have the floor, I have the floor.
Well, you're putting out one of the...
I'll put me in position, then you can... Come on, I got, okay? So, what I'm saying is, we're gonna evaluate every cost analysis of a new truck, used truck, in my opinion, that's how it's done. And then we're gonna evaluate whether we're gonna hire a hauling like we do, or do it ourselves. I mean, it's gonna be a fast, I would think that we'd evaluate a new truck, definitely, and also how the hiring hauling's gonna be done privately, about a time. And that's what I'm saying, that's some of the, both of you are what we should be considering.
May I suggest that we allow the committee to form and then do their diligence and come back?
I'm willing to do that.
Give us, give us the information that we need and stop guessing as to what is gonna be on Facebook later tonight.
Anything else, folks? I think most of it here. Thank you, folks. Happy evening. There's a waiting board meeting tonight, right? Yep, seven o'clock. Just wanted to say for waiting board...